This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court. October 30th, 2007. It's now 5:30 PM. As we do on meetings, we'll start with invocation. And I lost the card. Not yet, Jack. Thomas Caruba, pastor. And then I'd like to ask the Chief of Police, God look, I see it lead us in the two pledges. But not right now, after their invocation. Go ahead, Thomas.
That's right. Father, we just thank you, Lord, for today. Yeah, we thank you, Lord, how you bless, how you just lead, direct and guide. And Father, we ask, Lord, God, for just your mind in everything that's heavy decision that has to be made today, good and right decisions, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Chief, the US flag and the Texas flag.
Thank you, Judge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Pete, or whoever put it up there.
I think that's the first time we've done it right, so...
It's a hard one.
First item of the agenda. If I can just say, I know everybody's important here, but if I can ask everybody just to put their cell phones on vibrate, so we don't disturb during the meeting, please? Including me. All right. Public comment, I have one public comment. Jack Gibson. Nice to see you, Jack. I hadn't seen you in a while.
My name is Jack Gibson. I live out in Arroyo City. I'm here tonight representing a committee that we have, that we started out at Arroyo City, Arroyo City Concerned Citizens Committee. Basically, we're just trying to do things that we think would help our community. And every once in a while, we run into some problems that we need some help on, and I'm here tonight to discuss two of those. One is Emergency Services District, and the other one is the Perennial Red River Services Corporation. Since, if you'll allow me, I want to start with the Emergency Services District first, because this will kind of tie in. We have a few fire hydrants out at Arroyo City. There are some liabilities issues that East Rio Honda Water Corporation has, and they have locked the fire hydrant, so that we can't, we can't use them. Basically, all we want to be able to do is go and use those hydrants to fill a pumper truck to be able to go fight a fire. We're not really looking to connect the hose to it and fight a fire there. But we had a meeting with East Rio Honda last, this month, their regular meeting, a couple of weeks ago, and they're concerned about liability issues. And I can see their, I can see their point, it's just that somehow, between y'all and us and East Rio Honda, we should be able to resolve this. From East Rio Honda's position, they have unlimited liability. If somebody decides to sue them because a fire plug didn't work, wasn't enough pressure, whatever the reason, they can sue them for $200 million. The county, on the other hand, their liability, as I understand it through the tort reform, is limited to $250,000. And East Rio Honda wrote a letter to the Emergency Services District, asking them if there was some way that they could get some help from the county to limit this liability issue. They got a very short, as I understand it, very short letter back, said no. And that's where we need y'all's help, because we're getting into a lot of lawyer, legal leads that none of us really understand. All, all we know is, there, there should be some way for, for this to be worked out, where East Rio Honda has some protection on, or limit on their liability, and still be able to supply, allow us to use, and when I say us, I'm talking about the Rio Honda Volunteer Fire Department, to use those hydrants to fill the pumper truck. I'll give you an example of last week. On Tuesday, I was on my way up here, I got a call, we had a brush fire. We got it out, we got a call, we had another brush fire. As we were going near it, we got a third call. So we split the equipment, we wound up going over about a mile south of 106 on Paredes Line Road, down a little road called Latina Road. We got over there, fire's pretty close to some houses. We had 750, about 700 gallons of water on the truck, myself and Bart Simpson were on the truck. We were able to manage, we were, we were able to control that to a point to where the houses weren't in danger, but then we were out of water. So we went to Rio Honda, I'm, I'm sorry, we went to Arroyo City to the fire station, discovered we were short of union, and we couldn't put water in at the fire station. There, there was one plug unlocked at Arroyo City. I don't know why it wasn't locked. I don't know if they didn't have the lock to do it or what. But anyway, we went up there, took us about 10 minutes to put 1,000 gallons of water in the, in the pumper truck, went back and fought the fires. Luckily, nobody was hurt. Nobody lost any life or property. There was some brush burned up. But that's, that is, that's a real good example of what we're talking about. That's real life stuff. It's not hypothetical. Now, and there's, there's several problems here, and I don't really want to take up a lot of time tonight going into the problems with the Emergency Services District, other than to say, there is a problem there, it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed in a relatively short period in the future. I'll be more than happy to go into that in detail with whomever y'all suggest. The brush fires lead back to a more immediate problem, ongoing thing, Red River Services. We all got a notice last month...
Hey, Jack, hold on. Before we go move on to the Red River issue, why don't we, if you'd like, let me have Commissioner Tamayo coordinate a meeting, if you haven't done so already, between herself, Johnny Cabasos, somebody from our legal, legal department, somebody from East Rio Honda Water Supply, your group, and myself, and maybe Pete Sepulveda, or somebody from his office, to discuss this with that, and then we'll, you know, then we'll come back to the court and see if there's any recommendations. So if you'd like to set that up at some point...
Yes, I had already talked to Johnny Cabasos, as I let you know, Jack, and he was to coordinate a meeting for us, but we had not included Pete Sepulveda, which I think is a very good idea, and the judge.
And Legal.
So we need to do that, Johnny, and as soon as possible. We have two representatives from my advisory committee, the Commissioners' Committee from Arroyo City, that will be attending that meeting, yourself and John, if I'm, if I remember correctly, Jack. So Johnny, I don't know how far you've gotten with putting that meeting together, but do include Mistress Sepulveda, as well as, as the judge and Legal, when we meet.
She'd like within the next couple of weeks, if you can, whatever, whatever everybody's schedule permits, okay? Didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to get that out of the way and then move on.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll check with the representative. We'll see if we can...
You got it.
We're, we're pretty flexible, so y'all work it among yourselves, whatever works best for y'all.
Yeah, I, I think you'll find that Jack and John will make it, as long as you make it happen.
All right. Thank you.
But to get back to the, to the Red River Services thing, everybody got a letter, they're going to quit picking up brush unless you call them, they're going to quit picking up heavy trash unless you call them. That's working real well. Joe called last week, three days later, I got a call. First, they were, we were told, they had to send somebody out, look at the pile, and tell us how much they were going to charge us. Number one is, I thought I was already paying for that service. Joe called up there with another question, along with same lines, and she hadn't heard from anybody for a week. Talking to different people around today, people are making calls, they don't get through, they get, they get real frustrated in a hurry because they're never able to get through, or they never get calls returned to them, so they call once and just quit. But the brush is going to be, is, is a problem. It's a safety problem. The, the three fires last week that we made were started by people burning brush and/or trash. I'll tell you where I personally stand. I'm not getting full service that I signed up for, was forced to sign up for. I don't think I should have to pay my whole bill. And y'all are going to wind up, I mean, you, you don't realize it, but people are really getting unhappy. I mean, to the point, they're talking about coming up here and dumping stuff out, out in parking lot. And I don't think anybody wants that to happen, but, but nothing really seems to be going anywhere. We've had the same problem for two and a half years.
Jack, just, just FYI, just to save you a little bit of time, we have a couple of items in executive session to talk about this, and I think that is probably going to be resolved, I hope, today. And if you want, you can, you can wait till we come out and listen to what's going to occur at the end of the executive session, but I think we're, you know, we're going to be recommending some things, and Legals will be recommending some things that might address some of your, the very concerns that, that, that you're talking about right now.
But I want, one thing I don't want to get lost in the mix is, we signed up for, for a package of services. If we're not going to get all those services, we shouldn't be paying what we're paying now. That, I think that's very important. That's pretty well, pretty well covered stuff that I, that I wanted to go over tonight, but it, it's just, you know, y'all are tired of hearing it, I'm tired of coming up here about it, but you...
Well, you shouldn't, you really shouldn't have to, but...
And the, and the one other thing I want, I want to address, and I've, I've spoken to this before, and I'm going to keep harping on it. When y'all appoint people to these boards and commissions, you've got to stop appointing political plumbers, you're going to have to quit making political payback with them. You need to start getting people on there whose main interest is taking care of the county, and the, and the citizens of the county constituency. And, and if I, if I trotted 100 people in here next week, I think they'd all agree with me, that that's a, a big problem. That's one of the things, and I've harped on this and harped on it, y'all are getting tired of hearing it, and I'm getting tired of saying it, but that's one of the things that got us in this mess with Red River Services, was conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Jack, and I'd like to, on a positive note, I want to thank your community, our community, Arroyo City, in the manner that you, you responded to volunteering for the volunteer department, you and, and many others. I think you have, how many volunteers out there?
We've got nine right now. We've got a couple more than this morning.
Nine right now, so for Arroyo City, for the number of people there, that was a wonderful response, so thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Jack. Any other comment from anyone that did not sign up? On the consent items, are there any items any member of the court wish to take out and discuss separately? That along with travel?
Judge. Items 26, 27, 30, and 35.
26?
27, 30, and 35.
To discuss separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to take out 36, having to do with the automobile burglary and theft prevention, and I will, Chief Garcia wants to make a short presentation. Items 10, 11, and 12. Any, any other items on travel? If not, do I hear... I'm sorry?
On number 16, is there anything that we need to discuss?
No. On that one, no.
No, okay. That's it.
Do I hear motion to approve consent items 2 through 37, with the exception of items 10, 11, 12, 26, 27, 30, 35, and 36? And all travel items 38A through 38H. Do I hear motion for approval?
Some move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. The only item that we can, I'd like to address, before we go into executive session, because Chief Garcia needs to, needs to scoot, is item 36, consideration and adoption of a resolution acknowledging the 2007 Texas Automobile Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority Annual Conference in Cameron County, Brownsville, Texas, November 4th through November the 7th, 2007. Tony?
Judge, Commissioners, this is the second time our agencies, my office, together with the Brownsville Police Department, have, have hosted this, this type of conference in Cameron County. The last time was 2001 at the island, where we had about approximately 217 individuals to, that attended. This year is in Brownsville, which is November the 4th through the 7th, and we're here to, to officially invite you to the, to the conference. And, and, well, I'll do that, the chief will, I'll hand it over to the chief, please, Judge.
Judge, Commissioners, good evening, and thank you for, for allowing me to be one of the first ones up here. I got to run to another meeting here on another project. As Mr. Seguera states, we're hosting the annual conference for the automobile, the Auto and Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority Conference. We expect over 200 police officers throughout the state of Texas to attend this conference starting as of Sunday morning, and running all the way to Wednesday afternoon. We take this time and the opportunity to formally invite all of you to attend our welcoming reception, which is going to be on Monday at 4 o'clock at the Event Center. We hope to see you there. I know some of you have been invited to do, say a couple of words, I think the county judge and our mayor, and a couple of other people, the county commissioners, if you can, please attend the reception and the welcoming on behalf of the, of the Auto Theft Mobile Prevention Authority. I serve on the board, I'm appointed by the governor, so it'll give me great pleasure and honor to have all of you there, to show the support that you have for this program, especially here in, in Cameron County, working hand in hand with Mr. Tony Seguera and his group, to try to prevent auto theft and to reduce the number of auto theft incidents in, not only in the state of Brownsville, but in the county of Cameron.
Chief, and you know, this morning, we were at the, at this hearing, the, the auto theft issue came, Commissioner Wood was there, and, and he witnessed also the, the auto theft issue that, that was spoken to, and I will tell you that, that we've had a, a auto theft, as you know, an auto theft task force, or auto theft surveillance at our bridge system for about 15 years, and it appears that other ports of entry want to do the same thing. As, as when we adopted that program back in 92, it was simply just to deter auto theft, and it, it worked. I think the auto theft rate went down significantly, if I, if I remember the figures right, but now it's a little bit more than that. Now it's not only addressing auto theft, but as you know, we've got a lot of illegal contraband that's going southbound, cash, weapons. So this is going to be a little bit more, so I applaud your, your efforts to do this. We hope that we continue to enhance the auto theft surveillance program at our, at our ports of entry. It's something that we need to do and expand it to have eventually canine units, sophisticated equipment to, to help this southbound traffic that, that is becoming more and more a threat to the border, as, as you well know, Chief. So thank you. I will be there, and I'm sure everybody on the court will, will make every attempt to, to attend the conference as well. And Tony, thank you very much for all the, all the work that you do in your department.
Well, I want to personally thank each one of you for, for supporting our, our program. As you know, it started back in 1999, and to date, we've been able to recover 1,237 vehicles going through my office, or, or vehicles trying to get titled. That's a total of $18 million worth of vehicles that, that we've been able to, to, to recover. As part of your packet, you have your, your ID, if you join us...
To get us into the conference, or what?
Well, for, during the conference, and hoping you guys can...
Looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I move to approve the adoption of the resolution.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Chief, before you leave, I want to thank you, Yacina, in your office, who was extremely helpful to my office this afternoon in taking care of your issues. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa, to discuss a whole bunch of items. Item A, conferred Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning disputed monies regarding the lease agreement with GS Morgan Properties pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item B, conferred Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1A and 1B, Block 122, Brownsville original town site pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, deliberation regarding lease of land for the right-of-way usement on property owned by Cameron County at the Free Trade Bridge pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcels 9 and 11 for right-of-way for Dixieland Road Project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel 1 for right-of-way for FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item F, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel 3 for right-of-way of FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item G, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel 7 for right-of-way for FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item H, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel 39 for right-of-way for FM 732 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item I, conferred Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning request from the First Baptist Church of South Padre Island to open a road on county property north of the Convention Center pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item J, conferred Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others, cause number 2005-07-3905-A, BFI Waste Services of Texas LP and Waste Management of Texas, Inc., versus County of Cameron and the 13th Court of Appeals, Corpus Christi, Texas, cause number 13-06-623-CV, and BFI Waste Services of Texas LP versus County of Cameron and Red River Service Corporation of Texas, Inc., case number B05279, for discussion of status pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B. Lastly, conferred Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection Contract about issue of non-compliance or of default and possible litigation on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Thank you. ................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Section fourteen shall be, and I'll give this to Laura, I'll give you a copy of this in case, for your records. Section fourteen shall be amended to add subsection fourteen point four. Red River Service Corporation may at its sole option choose to terminate this agreement upon a minimum of one hundred and twenty days written notice. During that period between the giving of the notice and the date of termination, Red River Service Corporation shall continue to provide all services required by this agreement at the rates specified in the agreement. Section five shall be amended to add the following after the second sentence in section five. In order to ensure timely provision of brush and bulky waste pickup and ensure that only customers in good standing receive such services, Red River Service Corporation shall make available telephone, email, and U.S. mail contact points at which customers shall notify Red River Service Corporation when they have brush and/or bulky waste placed for pickup. If the customer does not so notify Red River Service Corporation, Red River Service Corporation will only be responsible for collection of that customer's waste if it is placed physically adjacent to the ninety-six gallon container for that customer's account. Where the brush is properly placed adjacent to the ninety-six gallon container, Red River Service Corporation personnel collecting the ninety-six gallon container waste will identify the brush for pickup within a thirty-day period. In this manner, Red River Service Corporation shall make brush and bulky waste collection available to each customer once per month, but in no event shall Red River Service Corporation be required to collect brush and bulky waste more than once each month. Okay, do I hear a motion for approval of that again? Do we have to approve this again? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the amendment to the contract?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, any opposed? Item carries. Please note that Commissioner Tamayo did not participate in those deliberations. Item K, that item was tabled, it was not discussed, having to do with court legal counsel concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection contract. Moved by Commissioner Gatsa to table. Second.
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. If we can go back to the items that were pulled out of consent. Let me start off with items ten, eleven, and twelve. And these are pretty easy to answer, just a question. And why some of these, as an example, we're giving them three years to comply, another one we're only giving them a year, yet the one that years got more lots and the one we gave them three years only has a handful of lots. That's finally a question on those three.
Uh, what do you mean, Judge and Commissioners? Uh, there is a, there is, there is no policy that says that you have to have a set time for, extension of time for unbuilt septic systems. Normally, we leave it up to the developer to dictate what, how much time he needs, but the minimum is probably just a year. But they can extend up to three years at their option as long as they provide the necessary documentation.
So the developer's the one that provides you with the, like, for instance, on item ten, he's got four septic tanks, or four septic systems that are still lacking, and he wants a three-year extension. Then you go to item eleven, he's got forty-six septic systems lacking, he only wants a little bit over a year. So really, the developers are the one that makes that call?
That's correct.
Would you, would you clarify that?
Yes.
Because I'm having, and I understand why, because right now, we're not seeing as many lots being sold as we have in the past, so it's going to take some people longer to sell lots than others, and the developer's the one directing that, I think. But in these, you've got, how many actual septic systems need to be placed in item ten and item eleven? Because what I'm reading is confusing to me.
Yeah, and I apologize to the court, obviously, there is some type of discrepancies. You know, which ones? I apologize again for that. I recommend that we table these three items and make the necessary corrections. I'll talk to my staff.
I don't mind changing them now.
But I want to make sure that the number corresponds with the.
With what there is out there.
Yes, and I really recommend that we do that and that we make the necessary corrections, bring them back to court next.
Item twelve seems to be correct, unless you just want to.
Well, it should be a nine there, it should be a nine.
Lot number nines on item twelve.
Yes, but I think we just, I would just recommend that, that we do it the right way, and I'll check with my staff.
I move to table ten, eleven, and twelve.
Table three items, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-six, consideration possible approval of an addendum number one in the amount of sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to the owner-architect agreement between Cameron County and Gomez Mendez Signs.
Judge, Commissioners, we want a request to table this item. The law is Delby and Pete who, so we can talk about the contract that we have with this firm and the increase in the fees.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood. Just a, just a quick question, Javier. How come it got on the agenda for approval if it hadn't, if you hadn't run the traps yet with everybody? I'm sorry. Why did, why, I mean, if you're asking it to be tabled, to run it through legal and through somebody else, who was it? And I guess my question is, why did it, why did we put it on if we hadn't run our traps yet with legal to get all this stuff taken care of?
Well, Judge, it didn't go to me. I think Richard signed off on this. And so I brought it up when I looked at it to Javier that I had an issue with it. But Richard signed off on this one.
Were you expecting to have these finalized before today?
It, I was expecting to, but I mean, it could wait.
We didn't have a timeline.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to table item twenty-six? Already did that.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-seven, discussion possible action on the preparation and issuance of a conservation easement on land located at Andy Bowie Park Convention Center.
Judge, Commissioners, on this one here, we, we were approached by a environmental firm, which is SWCA and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And what this is, is in the background, I show a, an aerial of this area. This is over by the Will Burning Center, just south of the convention center where the existing nature trail is now. What they want to do is, is this, this land belongs to the county, and what they want to do is, the areas that's in yellow, these are areas that they've already identified where they can go in there and dredge and reduce the growth of the cattails. So what they want to do is, is get certain individuals at all mitigation for certain projects within town or anywhere else to do this work, to do the dredging, and get credit through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Now, what we would have to do is, we'd have to create that conservation easement so that they can get that credit. So the other thing that they mentioned to us, and this is, this is just food for thought, but what the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is telling us is that we could, because all this area is wetlands, we can't do anything with it anyway, we could identify or create a master plan for this area to sell or bank mitigation credit.
Mitigation credit.
So it's going to do two things. It's going to reduce the cattails and improve, of course, the, the birding attraction out there because it's already, it's, it's, the cattails have already taken over that area. So there's not a lot of bird watching you can do. So the other thing, of course, they would pay us money for, for those mitigation credits. And the U.S. Army, Army Corps of Engineers told us that they would create that master plan for us, of course, at no cost.
Javier.
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns I had was, that was item number two on your background statement. And I was trying to figure out what you meant by that.
What it was, Commissioner, is there was a gentleman, there's two people, there's a group that's built, that built a development on the, on the bayside. I think they call it Tortugas or something, it's like a restaurant. What he did was, he went in there and mitigated and did some work out there on the bayside. Well, it didn't work, so the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers says, you're going to have to mitigate somewhere else. So that was, that's one individual. The other person that's asking for mitigation credits on our land is a, is a person that's building a residence on the island, and there's some areas right next door to his property, or actually on his property but next to his building, that's wetland, so he filled that in, or is going to fill it in, and he wants to use our land as, for those credits. There's not very much land on the island that they could use for mitigation, and that's why they've come to us.
Yeah, but is it right for us to use public property to offset an individual's mitigation problem with wetlands? I mean.
Well, I think legal might be able to answer that more so than you. You know, I mean, can we, can we allow for someone to use mitigation credits that we as a county get and allow an individual who is doing an improvement on their property on the island needing credits to offset them by using county land to do that with? And it's, and it's not, just to help Delby, it's not creating wetlands, it's enhancing, enhancing the wetlands, so.
Well, you know, the bottom line is, if somebody's giving us credit, that is because there's something being created, whether you, you call it enhancing or creating, otherwise you won't get mitigation credits.
That's correct.
That's the only way you can get credits, you know? I mean, if we, if we start giving those away to enhance our property, you know, I mean, is it, is there any value to us there?
I don't, without looking at it further, I, I don't think that we could give someone else our credits. I think that if the court wanted to create this for the court, for the county's benefit, they could do it, but I don't know that the Army Corps of Engineer, I don't, are they okay with this?
Mm-hmm. Now, what they did suggest, though, in the future, that we could consider banking it. So in other words, we would sell those credits to somebody. And just to give you an idea, they, they say up in, you know, other areas, Dallas and Fort Worth and San Antonio, you know, they go for twenty, thirty thousand dollars an acre. But there's probably maybe more of an abundance of areas that they could use for mitigation. Here on the island, it's very limited, so that value may go up, or could go up.
I don't have a problem with the county enhancing the area and creating a nicer area back there. My only problem is allowing the mitigation credits to be utilized by a private individual.
I understand.
That's my, my only concern.
Okay. And I know that we've, we spoke with the Economic Development Council on the island, just to make sure that this work that they're doing would, would enhance their project, and they said it does. So that's why we continued the dialogue with, with these individuals and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Well, I see where legal signed off on it. You all didn't have a problem, Delby?
I wasn't really aware that the credits were going to.
Private individuals.
Private individuals.
Oh.
I thought we were doing it because the Army Corps of Engineers asked us to do it, which we've done before, I think, with Brownie Road Park. We've done, we've done an easement. So that's what I was under the impression, I wasn't aware that we were going to give the credits to an individual or private individual.
So now that you have that information, are you reluctant?
I am reluctant, and I'd like to talk to the Army Corps of Engineers and see why they are okay with this. Because I, I don't think we could give, if it's something of value, then we cannot give it away.
Then evidently it is, something of value.
Do I hear a motion to? Do I hear a motion to table the item?
So moved.
And have legal speak with the Army Corps of Engineers?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty, consideration approval of memorandum of understanding between Cameron County, Texas, and Community Development Corporation of Brownsville. Frank?
Judge and Commissioners, the county has received funding from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs since nineteen ninety-six to provide a self-help Colonia Housing Center. And since nineteen seventy-six, the county has contracted with the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, a local nonprofit, to provide the services. Traditionally, since nineteen ninety-six, the Community Development Corporation has used grant funds that come from the state or pass through the county to the nonprofit as provided by the legislations that created the program. The funds are used by CDCB to pay for administration and operations, and they in turn leverage private dollars to provide housing construction and real, housing rehabilitation activities. In this present contract, which the county entered into in two thousand and three with TDHCA, after the contract went into effect, the monitoring entity for the state, the Office of Colonia Initiative, came back to us and said that CDCB could no longer use their indirect costing approach to receive reimbursements for administration and operations. So we worked with OCI and CDCB to try and find different ways to get CDCB reimbursements for work that had already commenced and was proceeding. We tried to do direct deliverables, which are using time sheets for actual activities. With OCI's direction, that didn't work too well. More recently, we tried to use grant funds to buy down the principal on loans made by CDCB. Some of those were accepted and some of those were not. Our contract expired with the state expired this past July. CDCB thus far has performed as expected, but has not been reimbursed for about half a million dollars. These are claims that we submitted to the state on behalf of CDCB that were rejected by the state for, for reasons that, that they have. For example, the state has said that some of these denials are based on their interpretation of HUD policy and, and decisions made by external auditors after the contract began. Nonetheless, that leaves CDCB out of about half a million dollars in reimbursements. Earlier this summer, before the contract expired, the CDCB Board of Directors came to Judge Casco and asked him to intervene, to request an appeal of the denials to the state Board of Directors for TDHCA. CDCB drafted a letter. The judge asked me for a recommendation, and I told the judge and CDCB that I would be comfortable with that letter going forward if we had an agreement with CDCB that held the county harmless in the event that funds are released and in some future case or future year, HUD or some other federal or state entity comes back and tries to recapture those dollars. In other words, because we have a contract with the state, the state would come to us and we would have to go to CDCB. This agreement was finally approved by their board, I guess, last week when I placed it on the agenda. So what we're trying to do is, is ask the state Board of Directors for TDHCA to give us a second pair of eyes, to give the contract another looksee, to make sure that the decisions of OCI are the decisions that the state wants to make.
I spoke to Michael Gerber a week or so ago, and he wants to come down himself and go over this and see what he can do. Apparently, there's some, some miscommunications. So this, this protects us, this MOU, and we will continue working. I sent a letter that, that was drafted that was, I guess it got their attention, and so we hope to try to resolve this if we can. But this, this MOU kind of protects the county from any, any potential, I guess, payback.
Recapture.
You know, recapture, so that's it.
That was, the reason I was asking that we look at it and hear from you, Frank, is because, you know, I think that we need to have an MOU when we agree to the project from now on.
We, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
From, you know, I mean, I think this MOU should have been part of the agreement with them when we allowed them to pass through us for the funding for that self-help Colonia.
I agree, and we, we did have an agreement with them in place, but that agreement expired when our contract with the state expired.
Was it the same agreement?
No, no.
Was it holding us and indemnifying the count?
It's more, it's more lengthy than that.
Okay.
It says more or less the same thing, but it provides other protections.
Other protections.
Yeah.
So, so the problem wasn't that we didn't have the right terminology, it's that it expired.
Uh, well, the, the agreement that we have with CDCB is an implementation agreement, and it, and it says different things. Basically, it says, you will perform the work, you will get reimbursed if the state approves your reimbursements. And, and what we're doing in this memorandum is, is saying that, okay, in the event the state does release reimbursements that they haven't released thus far, and in the event the state comes back or somebody else comes back and wants their money, then you will have to pay it back.
It holds us.
Yeah. So, so we're covered.
It indemnifies accounting.
I, I, yes, sir. But I, I believe we're covered with the agreement that we had with CDCB for the duration of the contract that we had with the state, and now that that contract has expired, this memorandum takes over.
But we need to find out, though, or we need to make sure that most of the agreements we have in this type of projects end, and the, end of finalizing the auditing and the paying of the funds that are due or owed, you know, follows for six to eight months or a year sometimes on some of these projects. So we need to incorporate language when we do those agreements to not have to come back with an MOU.
Right.
It needs to be included in the initial agreement, and, and I mean, it's just, everything is disposed of?
I, I agree with you. This is sort of a unique case where it's been a difficult contract, not only to administer but to implement.
Yeah, and it's a big amount.
Yeah.
Thank you, Frank. Do I hear a motion to approve by Commissioner Gatsa? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty-five, consideration authorization toward bids, RFPs, RFQs for the following: mops and mats. mops and mats, rental and cleaning?
Judge and Commissioners, Mike Forbes is recommending that we table this item and place it back on the agenda next week with a different recommendation. There is a local vendor within the three percent.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to table?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item forty-one, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge and Commissioners, within your packets, there were various line item transfers and one salary schedule. The line item transfers are basically just between building maintenance or contractual to cover an increase in the pest control contract. And the last one, in reference to the parks, is actually setting up the funding for the moving salaries from the community parks to Brownie Road Park for, now that they're handling over the teen center operations at Brownie Road Park. And the salary schedule, when we did the salary schedules inadvertently, the foreman within the Colonia Access's salary was an increase to match the other foreman's salaries, and this is correcting that.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Gadsa, discussion?
The only question I have is the foremen in the Colonia projects, don't they usually have maybe like five men that they supervise versus the other foremen have like twenty or...
Thirty-six.
Thirty or whatever, you know? I mean, it's kind of just questions, so.
Yeah, I think what we do, Louis utilizes the foreman for different projects, and they might be handling multiple projects at one time. I know that even like in the Precinct Two area, the foreman for, the foreman for the Roden Bridge is also the foreman on the Colonia projects that we're doing in the Olmito area. We're doing that in the Harlingen area also, and I think we've done that in the Seminole area, so. They, since we get reimbursed from TxDOT, we can move them from job to job and just get reimbursed from TxDOT.
Okay. No problem. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item forty-two, approval of claims. Any questions on claims? And include the additional ones that were passed out. Do I hear a motion for approval of claims?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note my abstentions on the affidavits I provided. I think Commissioner Gadsa, I think he had one.
I also provided an affidavit, too.
All right. Approval of minutes, October the second, two thousand and seven. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsa. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note my abstention, I was not here at that meeting. But also, when you do the minutes, up at the top, it showed present, it showed everybody present, then underneath it had, I think, I think John, you and I were absent that particular day.
That's...
So, just kind of take them off the top that were just absent, just do it like that, it was kind of confusing. Thank you. Item forty-four, consideration possible approval of agreement with Thompson, West for online legal research. Do I hear a motion to approve, or are there any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Gadsa. Any discussion?
Is this for the legal department?
Yes.
Which got robbed here, is that...
Well, it's Richard O. Burst.
Okay. Three users.
Yes, check.
Gotcha, all right. Is this different than LexisNexis or...
Yes, there are two types of services, there's LexisNexis and there's West, so it is different, and they're both copyrighted, so they're...
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item forty-five, consideration and adoption of an order creating the Cameron County Port Isabel Airport Zoning Board.
Judge and Commissioners, as you're all aware, we've completed a national development plan that was funded ninety percent from the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division. And that plan, it outlines several improvements that needed to occur at the airport, and the last year or so, we've been working with the Aviation Division of TxDOT and trying to get funding for some of those improvements. A couple of months ago, the court passed a resolution where we received a grant of one point six million dollars, and then the county put in the ten percent. One of the requirements is that the county by order create a airport zoning board. There's certain radius around the airport that the county by statute is authorized to be able to zone, and that is to prevent, I think about a year ago, we had a request from Department of Homeland Security to place a water tower, and we had to look at that real carefully because the initial request was beyond the height limit that the Aviation Division was recommending. In the past, we've had one situation that I'm aware of where a tower went in, and it's within that radius, and so that's the purpose of this board, is to be able to zone that certain radius around the airport and avoid situations like that, like that cell phone tower. Did get with legal, under the statute that's listed in the order, the county has authority to create such a zoning board, and that's staff's recommendation.
Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
The order. Moved by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item forty-six, discussion possible action regarding the appointment of members of the Cameron County Port Isabel Airport Zoning Board.
What's the number of the board?
Five.
Five.
And they would elect their own chairman?
That's correct.
By what we just approved.
I have a recommendation. David Garza, not the commissioner, the one that, from Harlingen.
Okay.
He has a lot of experience.
I think the only issue, did you all clear that issue up regarding the Army?
Yes.
Okay. So, Commissioner Tamayo, David Gadsa, not you.
The aviation guy.
The aviation guy.
I had Victor Trevino, who has public policy background, currently the city manager in San Benito, that I'd like to recommend.
Commissioner Wood, do you have somebody already in mind?
Eddie E. Hernandez.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Eddie E. Hernandez. He's represented the Chamber of Commerce on the NPO for many years and dealt with TxDOT directly through that board.
Good. Commissioner Benavides, do you have somebody in mind?
I have Evelyn Dale.
I'd like to recommend Roman Espazza from South Padre Island. Thank you.
All right. And I assume everyone's talked to their members and they're willing to serve on this board, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion to approve David Gadsa, the aviation guy, Victor Trevino, city manager, Eddie Hernandez, Eddie E. Hernandez, Evelyn Dale, and Roman Espazza? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item forty-seven, consideration possible action to allow Roban contractors temporary use of land for a lay-down yard to store construction equipment and material at Andy Bowie Park for the World Birding Center Boardwalk Project.
Judge Commissioners, this is, item I believe is tabled, I'm sorry, it wasn't tabled, direction was is to go back to the contractor and see if he would pay us, I believe it was five hundred dollars a month for the length of the term, and what he did was he wrote me a letter back saying that, you know, the amount that we were requesting was, of course, too much, it was, you know, over budget or over what he had, would expect to pay, and he didn't have anything within his budget to, you know, for a lay-down yard and so on. And he kind of explained that in that letter that I submitted in the backup. In the very bottom, last paragraph, he's asking if we would consider a hundred fifty dollars per month. In addition to that, the second paragraph talks about him helping us install some pipes across Park Road one, Park Road one hundred. And what that was is, we had talked to the developer of Ocean Towers, while they were doing their construction to cut across the road, if they would lay a conduit for us in the event that we would need to cross utilities, it's, the pipe's already there. So, we did that, we gave them the pipe, they cut the road, and they installed that pipe for us. So, that's what he's, I guess, in consideration, he put that in that letter. But the last thing, of course, is the, he's offering us a hundred fifty dollars per month. Pete was suggesting maybe that, you know, we could, if we get direction, maybe go talk to him tomorrow and see if we can bump that up a little bit, maybe three hundred dollars or so.
How many months are we talking about?
Seven months.
Seven months? I mean, it's a worthy cause, I mean, do you all really want to scramble for a couple hundred bucks? I mean...
No. No, I move that we go ahead and approve it, it's all going back to the Birding Center anyway.
That was moved by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Wood, to accept their offer of a hundred and fifty dollars per month for whatever timeframe that they needed, the seven months.
I'll bring back next week a license agreement or whatever we need to do.
Plus their support of Highway one hundred drainage and whatever it is that they're putting in. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Last item, discussion and possible action regarding the county, state, and federal legislative agenda. David?
Judge Commissioners, yesterday and part of the day today, the Mexican-American Legislative Caucus was in town, these are members of the state legislature, that were here to listen to the concerns of the local community and to basically tour and see the border in response to the hundred million dollars that the legislature appropriated, and the governor has since formed a border security task force that Judge Caspos is the chairman of. Judge, Commissioner Wood, Pete and myself had an opportunity to visit with them yesterday afternoon and talk with them at length about what we've been preaching for the last, you know, few months. And then today this morning, Judge Caspos had an opportunity to testify in his capacity as the chairman of the task force and in his capacity as county judge. Basically, the same message was sent to them, you know, regarding the issues that we're facing on a day-to-day basis, and that being the issue of border security and illegal activity, and then the primary issue we're looking at right now, which is the border wall and how we have viable alternatives and options that the judge and a lot of you have been talking about, which is the levy rehabilitation and the wear project. And so, they had an opportunity to listen firsthand to Border Patrol, to some of the other local officials, and take back some of the ideas that, you know, that they're going to be looking at next, by next legislature in two thousand and nine. Hopefully, you know, we'll continue to talk in these venues and continue to hopefully get our point across to the federal government, to state government, you know, that we need to look at the option of, like the judge said this morning, the moratorium on the border fence and other issues that can help us out with respect to border crossing and the efficient flow of trade and commerce. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Judge?
Well, no, I mean, I think the Senator Cornyn is recommending a moratorium until IBWC comes back with a recommendation on the levy system. I'll tell you, it was advised today that Michael Sherkhoff is still planning on visiting Cameron County. We had tried to get it scheduled for right after Thanksgiving, schedule didn't permit, so we're hoping before the end of the year he makes a trip to Cameron. It'll be a very, very, very limited group of people that will sit in to talk with him about it, but I think the message has to be loud and clear, show him exactly the design that was worked on in terms of the levy and the retaining wall that Carlos Marina had done. And the good thing is we're getting him down here again, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, to share our thoughts with him and hopefully kind of see it favorably towards our way, because it's ultimately his decision. I did talk with the Border Patrol Chief today at length, and he, the local Border Patrol Chiefs have a lot of input, they have a lot of authority into what recommendations they make to the secretary, and they want to work with us on this, so we'll just, you know, just kind of hope for the best and hope that we can somehow mitigate this wall issue.
If you plan on attending, you need to get your credentials in pretty early, because he refused to allow the mayor to sit in on a meeting last time he was here.
Well, I'm setting, I mean, well, we're setting it up, I'm sure we'll be okay. The credentials, I think, have already, well, mine have already been done, so. But anyway, again, it'll, you know, we'll let you know, I tell you, it's not going to be open to a whole lot of folks, he's just coming in and out, you know, just for a quick meeting, but we'll do everything we can to get the people that need to be there to be there.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Mr. Garcia's report?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. God save this honorable court.